Good evening. Welcome to our November 20, 2025 Board of Education meeting. Would somebody like to make a motion to return to public session? Motion by Bill, second by Barbara. All those in favor? Six zero. Thank you. If everybody would join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anyone have any board announcements tonight? I have a few. Can indulge me a moment? First of all, the most exciting thing I think that's happened, we have state champions in the House again. Not only did our women's cross-country team bring home the state championship, Sloan Wasserman brought home the individual state championship. Our class ran first, and she set a course record. So congratulations to Sloan. She is going on to run next year for Boston. And we look forward to seeing what she's going to do in the winter and the spring. And Coach Day has just been a complete game changer for our program. So, you know, ton of gratitude for him, and hopefully he's going to bring back the No Hilly days where the girls were just on fire with our cross-country team. Coach No Hilly, for those who don't know, just went into the Hall of Fame this year. So it's quite appropriate that we bring home a state championship again. I don't know if anybody had a chance to attend the John Jay Middle School drama this past weekend, but they did an amazing job. You know, a ton of thanks to Mr. Fritsch and everyone else that is behind the scenes making the magic happen. The future is definitely bright, and I can't wait to see them in a couple of years, what they're going to do at the high school, which reminds me that tonight starts opening night of the John Jay High School production of A Midsummer's Night Dream. Let me just make sure that I had that right. I plan on getting there at some point this weekend. It's always just a great intimate production where you're up really close and personal to the stage, and so I'm looking forward to that. And then we had a fantastic walk-through yesterday and got to see our Increase Miller staff in action and all the students. And one of, I think to me, one of the most heartwarming things was seeing some former students of Dr. Drake running up in the halls to give her a hug. But there was just a lot of, a ton of good work following our pillars going on in the school. So we're extremely fortunate to get the opportunity to see the work up close and personal and to see what the budget dollars that the community approves for us at work. It's, there's really some great things going on in the schools. And then, yeah, so that's all I have for announcements. If anybody else has anything to say, we can move on. Next, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No.
Okay. I would ask, and I'm thinking you're probably, along with the rest of your classmates, are looking forward to the Thanksgiving break coming up.
Can't come soon enough.
It will be good. Okay, with that, we will move on to 7.01 Collaborative Inquiry, and we welcome you to our board table.
Thank you for coming tonight, everybody. Appreciate it. And just as we hand it over to the team here a little bit, so for us tonight, we're going to be walk-through a process tonight regarding our dataset. And the main thing we want to really think about here is the process, not necessarily kind of what we're, they were particularly looking at, but it is the process. And then with that, this is like you're, you're like you're in the kitchen with your teachers, because we're right at the same spot. We're working on this together, we're figuring out what our next answers and really how to do. So it's not, hey, we've been doing this for a couple of years. We're right with everybody. All of us have our sleeves rolled up, and that's what we're just going to hopefully do with you tonight, roll those sleeves up a little bit. But please know that we're right along with our teacher colleagues as we start along this journey about how do we really use data in a meaningful and powerful way to impact our students. So that's again, just that kind of backdrop. We'll go ahead and start from there. And Dr. Drake, do you want anything before we hand it off?
No, I'm just really excited. These are excellent colleagues of ours, and they've done a really awesome job of using all of their strengths to make something that could be a little confusing and intimidating digestible and understandable. So I'm thankful to have you guys as our colleagues and looking forward to this evening.
Excellent. So today, we're going to talk about data literacy, and we're going to lean into this key protocol where we are unlocking data literacy. I'm Jessica Kingsbury, the new Director of Assessment, Research, Technology, and I'm so fortunate tonight to be joined by three of our assistant principals. And over here, we have David from K-5 representing elementary, Mike over representing middle school, and then Mallory at the high school. So it was really nice to be able to work on this together, because we each have a different lens and a viewpoint, and this came out better than I ever could have imagined, thanks to their collaboration. So from here, we keep coming back to this graphic just to frame it from that very 10,000-foot view. So right now, we've worked on Vision 2030, we've launched it within our buildings, we have our pillars, our treats, our portrait treats, but that's really our destination. That's where we're going. We know we're not going to get there overnight. It's a multi-year plan to get us there, and the thing that's going to bring us there is our professional learning communities. So along with our teachers, with our collaborative teams, that's kind of the road that we have in our analogy. And then if we're going to go on the road, we need to start the car. So the data is really the keys that are going to help us get to that destination. And keeping in mind that we have lots of different datasets that we can look at, but our ultimate goal is to come up with a unified process so that no matter what dataset you're looking at, everyone is using the same language and process to analyze that data. And alongside this, we are also trying to do work with Dr. Julia Drake, as well as with Dr. Maggie Conrad, about some unified learning experiences for our staff as part of a multi-year PD plan. So we're thinking about those things that we want to be sure that every single staff member has a common language and understanding of, whether you've been here for 20 years, whether you just got hired. So as we look at this presentation tonight and we look at data literacy, might be the first of a multi-part series on data literacy, but the intention for us is that when we roll this out to teachers, it will be rolled out across grade levels, across buildings, and then as part of our new teacher orientation, making sure that it is a capstone learning experience when you enter our district, to be sure that everyone has the same understanding of our priorities. And lastly, with this, we do want to just reiterate that the decisions that we're doing right now are very based in research. So Mandanach and Gummer are data analytic experts, and that's their passion. But when we go into teaching as our jobs, we don't go into it because teach, data is our passion, we go into it for the kids. So as the system says, teachers, you must look at data, you must look at data, Mandanach and Gummer realized that our teacher preparation programs for teachers on a whole doesn't include a lot of work of data. So what they did is, as there was pressure coming from different policy changes that teachers must look at data, they said that they needed to establish what does that actually mean? And they used this definition up on the board of using data to transform information and to transform those learning experiences for students. So with this, Mandanach and Gummer defined what data literacy is, and then what we had done here prior to my time had started to develop out using Nancy Love's Collaborative Inquiry Protocol. So the process that you'll see tonight is an adaptation of that.
All right. Thank you, Jessica. When we look at why data literacy and why that's important as educators, our students are always at the forefront of our why, right? And how we can continue to support their growth. So we look at data literacy. Data literacy will help us empower us to make informed decisions. It will continue to help promote collective responsibility and provide educators with that common language, as Jessica mentioned before, to help us work towards unified goals. In addition to this, with having strong data literacy skills, excuse me, students will be able to receive that same common experience in the class, and looking at it through an equity lens will help us continue towards, towards that path to empower them as we set forth on our 2030 vision. The first handout for tonight that we, I just want to reference here, is our KLSD PLC process, our collaborative teams workflow. So starting, I want to say in the spring of last year, all of our staff was introduced to the four essential questions of PLC. The first one being, what do we want students to know and able to do? So throughout the district, teachers have been working diligently together to identify priority standards. In addition to that, they're also working on the second question right now of how will we know students have learned it, right? So in doing so, working on developing common formative assessments. The one focus that I want to draw your attention to on this sheet is the highlighted section here labeled Teach. This is where our collaborative inquiry protocol is going to come into play. Teachers will be able to use this to help answer the next two questions as part of our PLC process. So the next question of how will we respond if students haven't learned the concepts and skills? And then also, how will we extend learning for those students who have been able to grasp those concepts and skills? I'd also like to draw attention to, to the circular arrows that are also on this graphic. This is a continuous process, this isn't a one-time event. Sometimes a misconception with data use is something that we compile and look at at the end. This is going to be a continuous process to help inform our instruction to provide the best level of support for all of our students.
And I just want to say, this was super timely, because we saw a lot of this yesterday. We saw the individual lessons, we saw the students doing peer work together, we saw, you know, the teachers standing back and watching and being able to see, because they're all standing at the board, who is struggling and be able to, so it's working already. It's, it's really great to see it in person.
It's fantastic. And the last piece I just wanted to mention here is through looking at data with this new lens, and this is, this is a first experience for a lot of us, as Dr. Blanch had mentioned before, this is just going, just the start of unlocking new opportunities throughout the district for our staff, for our students, and in the community, which we're very excited Our collaborative inquiry protocol is broken up into three sections, our key, as we tagged it here. The first section is really helping our staff understand the data that they are looking at. When you look at data, sometimes it could be a daunting task, and this process really helps break down the information for staff. It helps build that shared understanding across the district to help interpret what they're looking at. This also, this process encourages thoughtful questions, and engaging in this type of collaboration will help us determine next steps for our students and yield and be able to take action developing SMART goals as we proceed moving forward. For tonight's purposes, we are going to be looking at New York State data for 2023/2024 state Regents exams for ELA, algebra, and physics that David kindly put together for us tonight. Again, this is New York State data throughout the state. We're going to be utilizing our collaborative inquiry protocol and walk you through this process, just to get a little glimpse of what our collaborative teams and our educators throughout the district are going to be partaking in throughout the course of the year. The next sheet as part of our handouts here, we have our collaborative inquiry key, as well as our collaborative inquiry mini for us to help us walk through this process. This graphic reflects not only the collaborative inquiry process, but also the collaboration behind it. So I'd just like to take a moment to acknowledge Jessica and Mallory for their collaboration and hard work and creativity in developing this tool together, because it's going to benefit our staff and in turn, you know, help our students continue to grow. So I just want to take a moment and thank them, because it's definitely helped our data team as we work through this process as well. The first step that David, as I'm going to turn it over to him in a moment, is to predict and to go visual. These first two steps are really essential steps to help our educators within their collaborative teams calibrate their teams, right? Level set, see where everyone is at before coming to a consensus and moving forward within the process. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to David.
So I'm going to kind of lead you through the first few steps of the process, and Mike mentioned this sheet. This is, I'll call this the mini, and then this will be your packet, which has the graph on the front, because we're going to go back and forth between talking a little bit, looking at some slides, and then doing some individual work and talking with partners. So just so you have those two sheets ready to go. The first step of the process is our predict step. And to orient yourself, the slides will have these colored icons, like the pink predict one, and that'll always match up on your mini with whatever step we're on right now. So for predict, we're thinking about what we expect to see in the data. The reason that's an important step to start with is because it gets you immediately cognitively engaged with the data. It's, when we've gone through this, I've found that really engaging to start out right away, you haven't revealed the data, but you have to make your own predictions. And then it also helps question our mental models. When we've run through this a few times, I think we've all been very surprised on different datasets, making a prediction and then seeing, sometimes being very close, sometimes being very far away from it.
It's like being a scientist. You make a hypothesis, and you then pick it up.
I think you'll see a lot of parallels in the process.
It's also not terribly familiar to most people. You're used to just diving into data, all right, what do we, what do we know about what we see here? And so it is a...
And there's a couple steps. You'll see, like, we won't see the data for a couple steps, which I think definitely slows you down and gets your brain going right away. So we're going to do that step now. In the pink section, there's a few kind of like sentence starters to get you thinking. So I predict, I assume, I wonder, I'm expecting to see. So there's not a ton of space, but just in that little pink area, jotting down things you're expecting to see when we look at the proficiency scores from the ELA, Algebra I, and Physics Regents. And just a reminder, this is not KLSD data, this is the average for all of New York State. So when you're making those predictions, just keep that in mind. So we'll take one minute to just write down.
And David, we're looking at one year of results?
Yes, it's the 20, the snapshot was from the 23-24 school year.
Okay. And as a comparison, it's just what we think the state scores are going to be, or what we think Katona Lewis-Farrow is going to?
No, just predictions about what you think the state data is going to look like when we review it.
Yeah.
So as you're writing those down, let's just take a second to turn to someone next to you, share out those predictions. We've found that this whole process is a very like social process, and a lot of the thinking happens with other people and partners, small groups. So take a minute, share out the predictions, and then we'll move on to our next step.
I predict, I predict.
I wrote down that ELA scores are generally going to be higher than physics.
Yep.
I predict.
Yeah, I think one is that it's going to get a higher proportion of students who are proficient in ELA than in physics.
I would interrupt, but it's very similar. I just put math, which is a little bit above ELA.
Yeah. I said AL for one, that's the younger, it's hard, they didn't give you the years. Physics is just always a hard one, so I definitely physics. I think my numbers might be even, for New York State overall, I think it might be a little, might have a little too high, because you have a lot of different areas. I just remember from past years that the numbers are always, I'm always shocked at how low, much lower the numbers are. That felt really big.
Yeah, I see. I tried to put the numbers on the top. Right. Yeah.
I saw somewhere that the student achievement was 2022. No, I'm sorry. Was it?
Okay.
I forget what year it was.
Let's come back together. I hear a lot of interesting conversations. And just to clarify, I just want to make sure everyone understood, because these can get confusing in terms of when predictions, when we're thinking about this, we meant percent of students that would end up having like passed the exam or gotten a proficient score, not like what the score that would be considered proficient. I don't know if that was a confusion for anybody, but we were just thinking about what that bar in our mind, how many percent of students statewide passed the physics exam, how many passed algebra, and so forth. So moving to the next slide, we, right hand in hand in making predictions, we have, the next step is called Go Visual. And this is where we can define our expectations visually with color ranges. And I saw Kim brought her matching lights here to match.
Turn it on. We can show, we can show how it works.
Yeah, we're done. I'll move fast. So we have three different colors, we have green, yellow, and red. So think about it like this, and the chart might help a little bit. For green, if the, this percentage of students was proficient, then that would meet our expectations. Like, we are going to set our own individual where we think is a green zone, what we think is the yellow range, what we think is the red range. For example, you might say, as a state, if above 80% of students were passing, then that would be in the green zone for us. It's in terms of prioritizing different things to focus on as a state, obviously, we would do this as a school or grade team, but we're way zoomed out, then that would be fine. Then the yellow zone would be if that percentage fell in that range, then it would be something that would make us pause, and we might need to look into it further, might need to address it. If the percent of students proficient fell into a red range, that would be something immediately concerning, stop, this has to be addressed immediately. So the tool, the colors, again, it's, each person might have their own slightly different range, but it helps a group also think about, if you're looking at many datasets, what are we going to prioritize? Because you might be looking at 10 different things, whether it's a group of standards on a state test or something, if it was more focused, but it helps you prioritize among those. And it's kind of like a stoplight analogy, thinking about how urgent the different priorities are. So on your paper, your packet paper is right here, we are going to do this right now, that's why we have the highlighters. We're going to pretend the pink is red, and then you have a green and a yellow. So on that graph, you're going to shade in what you consider your green zone, your yellow zone, and your red zone for percent of students that are proficient on a Regents exam. And again, I gave 80% as an example of where green could be, but that doesn't have to be the number, just think about what yours would be, and then we'll share them out, and we'll come up with kind of like an average of the group. Does that, does that make sense?
You have to share your markers.
Oh, yes. These are mine.
He's got the two and the fifth.
I did the same thing.
Next time, bring more markers.
You guys win for like the most interactive fun so far this year.
Well, we didn't tell you guys, you're the guinea pigs for us, for your group.
Also glad that you think data is fun.
We're a very competitive group.
We are.
Team one-one bingo yesterday.
I disagree.
Unofficial result.
So notice, we still haven't seen the, actually revealed the data, right? We were talking about how there's a few stages of getting you to think before you've even looked at the data. So if we could just share a couple people, go color by color, and then Jess is going to...
Wave the magic wand.
Help with the tech wizardry, and we're going to then map that onto the slide over there. So anybody want to share what their green zone was? What threshold?
80% and higher.
Oh, I went much lower. It's okay. No wrong answer here.
55?
55.
So 80, 55.
For ELA, I actually went 90. I think that if we have 90% of our kids are at our expectation, that's where they should be.
Oh, but we're not saying what they should be. Are we saying what they should be, or are we saying what the data shows?
This is formation C, so like I say 90% of our kids should be proficient in ELA.
So this is a clarification.
I think 100% should be, but the, yeah.
Yes, so this, this color exercise, this part of it is more, is about the should. So it's not a predictive exercise in thinking like, oh, we think 50% statewide or 70% statewide. It's more like personally, and, but it would be more like as a team, right? If you're in a school group, if you're in a grade team or something like that, where do we think our students should be proficient statewide? So if you want to take, we can go back to it for a second, if you want to adjust it, and think about like green, what would be your cutoff as a state that you think, okay, if we're in this green zone, as a state, we're doing well, not, not a priority to address this.
And it's also good to keep in mind that 55 or whatever number you thought each of these levels might show up as, because well, once we look at the data, you'll be able to compare. Yeah, that was, that was what I've been marking. That's great.
So with that adjustment, we had a 90, 80. Anybody have a different number for green?
Yeah. I wish I was at 95. For Algebra I, 85.
So can we say an average of 90?
Yeah, we're all lumped around 85 or 90.
I had physics lower, just because, yeah, physics 70.
I had 85 in physics.
Okay.
I had 70 as well.
Physics is hard, yeah.
So with that, so let's set our green around maybe 85, sounds like, and then, again, this is not an exact science, we're just getting the sense of the group. Then for the next cut score, where did people have their yellow zone between what range?
I had small, so like a 10-point below.
And what was, what was it like?
So for English, I had between 7 and 80 yellow. For Algebra, I had between 75 and 65, and then for physics, I had 70 to 60 yellow zone.
I had a little bit bigger, sort of, just to kind of encompass a larger universe of students. So I would consider yellow between 55 and above.
Okay.
Any other yellow scores before we map it?
Let's go with 55.
So then, and then by definition, anything below that cut score would be the red zone. So again, this, it might depend on the person, the group, but it gives you a tool then, as we now reveal the data in the next step, to think about, okay, which scores are falling in our red zone, yellow zone, green zone? How are we going to prioritize?
But just before you do this, do we get a prize?
Bragging, you get a bingo, bingo boy.
Get a wolf sticker.
Okay, there we go.
Why are we lumping the very different class, like scores together, though? What, when, because?
It's just the way we decided to approach the data this time. You might just be looking at one, one exam at a time. So for example, if I'm in the math department, I'm probably going to only be looking at the algebra scores, and then I would develop the red, yellow, and green for that. But for this exercise, we just lumped them all together.
Yeah, I think, that's what I was saying too about, like, that we're very zoomed out. So like, I'm thinking elementary, like at a grade team level, you might more be even looking at one specific test, and then the standards on that test would be more, let's say, 10 different standards, where do they fall, green, yellow, red, based on student performance? And then seeing like, okay, which standards do we need to address? That would be like a more like granular example.
All right. I also wanted to touch on too, with this last process, how it translates to other aspects of what teachers could potentially use it for in the classroom. For example, in development of rubrics, right? If a teacher is working on a common assessment for an ELA writing sample, this is a procedure that they could use, all the ELA teachers within a grade level or department can come together and utilize the same process to determine what the rubric is going to be and hash out those expectations as well. determine what the rubric is going to be and hash out those expectations as well. And again, it's just a means of, of calibrating on what everyone's expectations are, and be able to, I keep hitting this mic, I don't know how you guys do this, and, and how they can move forward with that, right?
And I can see that's super helpful. One conversation we've been having is, how do we make sure that students getting the same experience regardless of the teacher that they have? And so I can see where that's really helpful, to make sure that that's actually happening, and it's some really good objective way to determine that. That's a really great use of that tool.
Absolutely. So I've been tasked with the Morgan Freeman narrator role, setting the stage for the next couple slides here. So the next section here is to observe, okay? So we want you, once we populate the, the data set here, to think about, you know, what stuck out to you? Was your predictions in line with the current data that we're presenting? What are you noticing? What do you see? Okay, turn it over to Dave.
Okay, so the big reveal. Here is the data. And just a couple reminders, this is statewide data across New York State. And these, the yellow, red, and green that you're seeing are the ones we just kind of settled on as a group. So you can see the different columns, the numbers might be hard to read. So it's 79% for ELA, 62 for Algebra I, and 74 for Physics. So in this observation phase, we're going to take a couple minutes in the yellow section of your mini sheet. There's kind of two steps within it. The first is just your low inference observations. What are you seeing right in front of you? What do you notice? And then you'll see phase two, what are you surprised by? So kind of thinking back to your predictions, how did things play out compared to that? Take a couple minutes and write down your observations in the yellow zone.
Seventy-nine is that?
Which is all below what we said they should be at. That's actually higher.
That's shocking.
That's right. This is important. This requires.
Okay. Does anybody want to share out any reactions, any thoughts, observations? I heard the word shocking.
He's an expert observer of. I'm shocked that algebra is so much lower than physics.
But Bella and I pointed out, again, this is why I asked, why are we lumping these together? I know that it was for the exercise, but think about it, the people who take physics are taking physics.
Self-selective, yeah.
It's self-selective, whereas algebra, we are requiring our students to take algebra. ELA, it is important that our kids take. So you're gonna see high scores in that because I want to take that.
And I was only one point off on ELA. I had eighty.
You won. And you're, you're almost jumping ahead to the next.
I was gonna say.
It's perfect what you just said. It's coming.
So if we move to the next slide, kind of part two of the observation step is defining a student problem. And again, a different grade team, a different guiding coalition, a different building team, looking at data could define different problems with the same data. But this is kind of just, you know, a sentence frame to help us think about having a data point, having a certain group of students, how did they perform, where was the data source? So if we fill that in on the slide, one potential problem, student problem you could define here is 62% of high school students in New York State are scoring proficiently on the Algebra I Regents test, as evidenced by the New York State report card.
All right. Next up here, so in the green highlighted section here on your mini, and also on the key, is making inferences and questions. Now, as we ran through this process several times as a district data team, one popular and common question that, that always arose when we were doing this was, are we missing any data, right? Is there additional data sources that we need to be able to make the most best-informed decision to move forward? So with that frame in mind, think about that as we go on to the next section here.
We're gonna take one more moment to jot stuff down again. We're gonna have the green step, infer and question. So now that we have our data, we have our green, yellow, and red zones, we've talked about our observations. In this step, we're going a little bit deeper in our thinking. What questions are now arising? One of them Mike mentioned could be other data that you'd want to see, it could just be wonderings about why the data looks like this, and then any inferences you're starting to make based on the data. So take a minute, and then we'll share those out and have them typed up. Okay, so let's just share out a few. Jess is gonna type them up as we go, so we can track them. Because this is, if you're thinking about the key, and we'll talk about this in a second, but this is a pivotal step, because this is gonna kind of decide, as a group, look at the data, if you're gonna continue kind of going through this cycle a few more times, or kind of launch off into the next part of the process, depends on kind of what inferences and questions you generate as a group.
You're taking my line, David.
I was wondering if it includes just general ed students or all students?
I went right into what lessons or how, what's our curriculum around algebra in New York State, because that's the one that stands out to me as a big problem.
I wondered, like, does this, is this reflective of most students, what percentage of students take the Regents? And then what are the demographics of folks who didn't pass?
How has it changed over time? Is there a big difference between last year's scores and this year's scores?
And has the, and has the test remained the same? Or has it changed over time?
You might also wonder, like, how did males versus females perform?
That was something that came up in one of our reports.
I wonder the age of the students.
Females have scored much better.
That goes without saying.
So this, and this data set is not nearly as rich as the ones we'd be looking at, like a teacher would be looking at, because there'd just be so much more context and data points. Again, this was just a very zoomed out one to just kind of go through this process. But we already have so many different avenues that we could start investigating and other data to look at, and that leads us right into that next part of the key.
All right.
Mike, you can repeat.
So now we come to a fork in the road. All right. And really, all fantastic questions. Please join us for a data team meeting one, one time, because phenomenal job. But really, based on the questions that you shared, we would then repeat this cycle, okay, which is completely okay to have that continuous process here. Now, if everyone came to a consensus, we felt like we had enough information to determine and verify cause and effect, then we would head right, and we would pay us go and collect $200 and head on to the next, the next step here. But really, based on the questions that everyone formulated here tonight, we're going to cycle through this one more time and look at another data set that Mallory is going to guide us through.
All right, so we had several questions on how to look at this data as well. We were discussing, well, how could we disaggregate this data, male, female, by, whether students are general education or students with disabilities, and that's what we decided to go with. So notice at the bottom of your mini, there is a, yeah, there is a pause button to allow you to either go through the cycle again, or to, to go back to the previous, to the next section. For the purposes of this question, we're gonna predict and go visual at the same time.
Do you want to go back a slide?
I don't know. Okay, yeah, I'll do that. All right, pretend you didn't see any of that. So, so what I'd like you to do is take two minutes. We're gonna go into this packet for a quick moment. Go to the second page. Notice that we have it as general education students and students with disabilities. So what you're going to do is on here, you're going to make two predictions for every, for each of the content areas. So what percentage of students do you think were proficient in ELA that are general education, that are special education, and you'll do the same thing for algebra and the same thing for physics. Okay, so you'll have about two minutes to do this as well. And you do not need to create new green, yellow, and red zones, because we did that already in the previous section.
There you go.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, one more minute. Okay, so what were some of your predictions? And remember, there are no right or wrong answers here. What were some of your predictions for each of the exams?
Was, was seventy-nine the combined?
Mm-hmm.
It was, okay.
Yeah.
I predicted eighty-five for general ed and fifty-five for students with disability for ELA.
Great, thank you. Other predictions?
So no, my math doesn't add up, so that's, this is what me and Julia here. So I just had, for ELA, I had ninety and forty.
And forty, okay. Just keep in mind that those numbers don't necessarily have to add up, because we're talking about all students that are general education, and you're comparing the data versus all those students, and then all students with disabilities, and you're comparing the data against them. So they won't necessarily add up.
I was trying to figure out the percentage, you know, the.
Do you know what percentage in statewide student, general ed students versus students with disabilities is, like, are eighty percent of the students in New York State?
That would be a good question to add to our wonderings list.
Okay, that's a wonder.
Diving into the data, be a good one that we could continue to dig into. Absolutely. Okay, so let's move on here. So this is what the data looks like. So again, we can start with the low inference observations. What do you notice and what do you see? And then you can move on to phase two, which is examine the data and compare your predictions. What are you struck by, and what are you surprised by? And if you look at the mini document again on the back, sorry, at the bottom of that pause section, there is some space for you to write there. And once you're done, feel free to talk to the people around you.
Same percentage has to get the diploma right now.
Right, right. And these two are below 50%. I'm now struck by.
Yeah.
Why is algebra percentage wise more than ELA would be?
I would have expected Janet's students to have performed better.
A bigger disparity, you know.
I would have expected, so Janet's students were pretty close to. You know, seventy-nine, sixty-two, seventy-four. I would have expected there to be a higher percentage of doing better. And also, and I think I'm jumping ahead, but makes you wonder, you know, what are the disabilities?
I was very good in math, not very good in math. My view of it is skewed, because being left out.
Oh, sorry.
This is feel like he belongs.
All right, let's bring it back. What are, what are some things? I'm glad you're so engaged with it. This is great. Let's bring it back for a quick moment. So, so what are, what are some of the observations that you're making in the discussions that you're having with your team? What are, what are some of the things that you're sharing right now?
Kim, we need your light.
All right, who, who's not gonna?
What are some observations we're making? I'm happy to see everyone so engaged with the data.
We were just struck by how low they were, like, especially on the students with disabilities, because when we're talking about students with disabilities, there's a wide range of disabilities, and you still have to pass Algebra Regents to get diploma. So we're still requiring, again, this is why I go back to, like, what's the curriculum, how are we teaching? Because these numbers scare me, actually, that we're graduating students this way.
Yeah, thank you for sharing.
And, and that's such an important question, going back to our first question for the PLC process, right? And what we want our students to know in identifying the priority standards, that is right there, the, the focus, right? And, and trying to help amplify and engage students in, in their growth, right? So that's part of our PLC process that all of our collaborative teams are working on right now.
And sometimes it's useful, I know that we were talking about, why are we looking at these three exams together? But at the state level or even at a building level, it is useful sometimes to establish your red, yellow, and green zones, and have all of the exams laid out, because that's when you start seeing where the stark differences are, and where you really need to focus in your attention. So in this case, let's say that there were only three Regents, we would probably say, we're gonna need to focus in on algebra. Other observations?
Some, some schools teach to these tests, and some schools don't put as much emphasis on that. So that could be, you know, school to school, that's a factor.
Yeah, those are all great comments. Again, we're, right now, we're in the observation phase.
I'll walk the fine line on this, because part of it has to go back to the previous slide that we saw, that, you know, the, like, the first one, the all students, where the observation was made that physics is an elective, so therefore it makes sense that they score higher. But here, physics is an elective, and there's still only 48% of the students But here, physics is an elective and there's still only 48% of students with disabilities.
Yeah, thank you for saying that.
Why is there that gap there if it's they're choosing to be in that class?
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
I was also, I was surprised by the fact that the Gen Ed student scores track so closely. I would have expected to see the Gen Ed scores higher than they were. I mean, they tracked pretty, just a couple of points off from the original data.
But I think some of that is the percentage. I looked up just for that, like, for example, the Algebra I in June 2024, there were 223,000 students overall, 182,000 were Gen Ed, and 40,000 were students with disabilities. Like, there's like the weighting to the numbers not being there for all.
Yeah. But it is also interesting to see that none of these numbers, right, none of these groups of students are in our green zone that were originally established. So they're all kind of in our yellow watch zone. Any last observations?
Yeah, I think for ELA, that's a real disappointment, especially the fact that the students with disabilities fall into the red zone that we established.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Okay, so after we go through this data, our next step is in the process is to take our initial student problem that we created before with David and expand it to note some performance gaps. So we filled in some of this information for you, and we're going to go ahead and share what an example of this could be. So we could say, for instance, 69% of general education students in New York State are scoring proficiently on the Algebra I Regents test, as evidenced by the New York State report card, while 35% of students with disabilities in New York State are scoring proficiently in the Algebra I Regents exam. So that is one example. Something else you might, you know, want to come up with is, for instance, in general, ELA students are, 83% of general education students in ELA are scoring proficiently versus, let's say, 69% in Algebra I. So again, every team is going to approach this problem of practice a little differently. So now that you've had a chance to look at the data and define a disaggregated student problem, we're going to go ahead and, again, develop some wonderings, develop any inferences that you have and any questions that you have at this point. So just for the sake of time, we're going to have you just kind of share, and Jessica's going to go ahead and take some notes as you share.
Don't be shy now.
I feel like I don't have enough information to...
I do feel like we had a wondering, though, about, I wonder if it's when students self-select, if that has different test scores than when they're in a mandated course.
I wonder if it matters what the disability is that the students have.
The number of students that are in each test.
How many students take each test?
I wonder, like, how close were the kids who failed to passing? You know what I mean? Whether, how many of those kids are on that test or were close?
Cut score.
Bill and I, when you were speaking about, like, the methods, the teaching methods or the curriculum, as a wondering, right?
If we were looking at sort of a smaller sample, taking away from sort of a statewide look, if we were looking at a different type of data set, we might look and say, is there something, is there a common thread for the students who are passing? You know, what are some common characteristics of students who are not passing versus passing? Is there something that comes up?
And to build on that, if you're at the state level, you might be asking yourself, regionally, how does this fall? Right? So it has implications for you at the state level, supporting the various districts.
When we say proficiency, are we just, because I, that's the first time we just use the word pass or fail. Are we actually saying you're proficient if you just get a 65?
So proficiency as defined by New York State are levels three, four, and five. And three is typically, what is that? Is that a, is that a 65? A three is a 65.
So it is kind of pass/fail.
Yeah.
And then there is data, even on like, each of those five categories. Like, you can see the breakdown of like, how many students got a one, two, three, four, or five.
Kind of back to your point.
And I guess that's my wondering then, actually, in those levels, how many students were in a one, two, three?
Right.
I didn't think that was a saying there. You know, that a lot of times folks would kind of look at those broken down into now upper and lower, and so you can start breaking those all, that's all. We're this close to getting that to spill over to the next phase, so then that's where you'd have that coming. So this is the part of the team, this is where it really starts shifting to now getting feeling, oh, there's like this energy, what can we do? And so I know this is at the state level, but even the shortlist we've got there, you could start to see that whichever team is coming together like this will kind of drive it down, so.
And at this point, as a team, you might say, well, we need to go back and we need to collect more data. Perhaps at a school level, you might say, okay, well, we have the state data, but what do our classroom assessments look like? What does the recent NWA or so on assessment look like? You know, what are our students' grades like? And how does that look like if we disaggregate it? And you might say, well, you know what? We have enough data at this time to go ahead and take some action, so then you'll just move on to the next step in the process. And you might come back to this several times during your cycles of learning.
Like, your wonderings get richer with the more data you're looking at, right?
Absolutely, yeah.
Oh, sorry. Just like compared to other states and what could be...
That's great. Yes. So from here, I do kind of want to bring us back to this 10,000-foot view. So one of the reasons that we really liked this key acronym, it honestly started with the shape and then we just dove into it, because this beginning part, we could cycle through that. We cycled through once, but we have more wondering. So we might ultimately decide, we want to cycle through again, we want to look at more data sets, we want to analyze this at a deeper level. Or what we could do is go through that fork in the road, which I'll get to. But this framework here is a framework that we're going to be doing with all of our staff, and they're going to get into these deep data conversations along with their teams, with data that's relevant to them. So for the purpose of tonight, we wanted to show you just that beginning part because ultimately we can't take action on statewide data, but our teachers could use this protocol to have a unified way to look at data so that they can then take action within their classroom and their instruction, really related to supporting all learners. So to kind of pull you through the right side of that key, just really as a preview of what we do, within here, we would start to look at verifying cause and effect. So we might start with that aspiration, that little thought bubble of like, what do we want to see differently? We want students to improve their test scores, maybe related to a certain subgroup. And then with our collaborative teams, teachers can talk through each of these six categories here, our instructional practices, intervention strategies, professional learning opportunities for what can we do differently to have an impact on this. So just to show you an example of what that might look like for this specific data sets, these are some of the questions we might be walking through with our staff. So I'll just pick one. But what instructional strategies have been effective at developing content mastery with students from disabilities? Maybe we can help support a certain subgroup of students, maybe we're doing strategies for all. But within here, we're going to start with that aspiration and that goal of increasing that proficiency rate, and then we're going to be talking through what can we do differently and walking through each of those sections. From there, once our teachers have hashed that out, they'll be taking all of the data from all parts of their collaborative inquiry protocol and using that to develop a learning goal, being a SMART goal, SMART, measurable, attainable, and coming up with the language of by a certain date, this is what we hope to see differently. And from there, we have a SMART goal, we'll then be moving into an action plan. So what are the things that I'm going to do differently? Maybe I have to do some new learning, maybe I have to do more regular data monitoring within my class to help get to that aspiration. So the document on the right here, which is also in your packets, is just a document that we can use internally to memorialize those action plans. And then from there, once we've done the action plan, maybe we've met that goal that we had in our little aspiration bubble and that came into this learning goal here, we can then go back and repeat the whole process, which might include diving into this data set in a different way or even diving into other data sets to continue that data inquiry process and then be able to transform learning based on our findings.
Can I just add something real quick? I want to go back to this fishbone analysis for a quick moment because I do think it's really important. The way we created this process was to ensure that we're approaching this from an asset-based mindset. So rather than talking about the deficits of our students, we're really thinking about, well, what can our students do and how do we work from there? What are the practices that we currently have in place and how do we build on those? We feel that that is a much more effective way of talking about our kids and really moving, you know, their learning as opposed to, you know, saying, oh, well, you know, what can't they do and what is going wrong? You know, it's really, what can they do and how do we move from there?
I have a question. This is really great, and it's work that takes time, right? And so how, help me visualize how we manage this, for example, if we're doing this work in a third grade setting, right? It's going to take time, you've tested them, you've benchmarked them, and you're going through, you know, this sort of process. Those kids are going to keep moving. How does that all connect together as the kids are moving on from grade to grade? Because, you know, you're identifying a problem, but it might take time to come up with a solution. You might, by the time you're ready to sort of retest and see what's going on, just help me picture, what does this look like in an academic year? How does it connect to other grades as kids are progressing through the system? I love this, I just want to have a better sense of what it's going to look like.
No, it's a great point, and that's where that professional learning community, the professional learning teams meeting is so valuable. Because at a 10,000-foot view, we want to come up with a multi-step process of training teachers on this, right? So this presentation that you saw tonight might be slightly adapted, but that'll be their first dive into the mini. We have a whole other adding, a whole other layer that we add on with asset-based questions, strengths, opportunities. And from there, it would be a multi-series training, but then when they're meeting with their professional learning teams during that carved-out time, whether it's weekly or daily, that's, once they know the process, they don't need us to walk them through it because then with their team, they could say, hey, we just gave a math test on Friday. Third grade, let's all sit down together and let's look at the data together. So it's a way for them to really have those conversations and to maximize strengths so that at the end, all students from all of those teachers have that same unified experience that, wow, we looked at the data and saw that across all our classrooms, if we made this change, it might help.
And I was just saying, at an elementary level, like that example, right now, we're meeting weekly with the professional learning teams, and I think it eventually will be a nimble tool that, like, kindergarten team might be in a very different place than the third grade team in where their unit cycles are or what assessments they've been given. But like you're saying, a formative assessment in the middle of the math unit, you could do this, it might be over one meeting, it might be over two meetings, come up with a plan that you're, the next day is going forward to address, and that would be like so much more granular than this example, but like addressing those math standards that follow in these.
So it can be used in a much quicker...
Yeah, so I can give you a quick example for that. So let's say as a math teacher, maybe in September, November, October, as we're giving out the diagnostic assessment, this process is going to take a little bit longer because that assessment is a little bit bigger, right? We might be looking at the state data and other information right at the start of the year. But as we start going through this process, if I'm giving several formative assessments, skills-based checks or whatever, I can bring in that information to a quick meeting. We can identify very quickly, well, where do we expect our kids to be? Let's set our red, yellow, and green zones, and now let's quickly look through this data, and now what do we do next? So it doesn't take as long as you become more and more familiar with the process. In the beginning, it will take a little bit more time because they're just learning it.
I can also see how this would be useful from test period to test period. So say a team isn't happy with their scores, and they go through the wonderings of how can we improve the scores, what different teaching strategies we can use. They implement one of the teaching strategies that they identify is potentially helpful, and then they can go back and look, did that help? Did that work? You know, and if not, what else could we change? So I can see how that's helpful just from test to test or quiz to test, seeing if what they're doing, and we've actually got the science of education now and data that we can look at, and so this is fantastic, you know.
And Barbara, also, one thing that caught my attention that you said too about students transitioning into the next grade, right? So within those collaborative teams, you have those conversations, sorry, the Italian, I mean, when my hands are keeping... The conversations centered around that vertical alignment, right? So thinking about how concepts and skills are translating to that next level for students. So that's all part of this process as well.
And one more thing to note is, if you look at that SMART Goal worksheet document that we have here that Jessica went through, there is a target date and timeline, and typically, we try to do these within an extended period of time. So it's not, we're doing this today and then we're doing it again in a week. It's, you really need to try something over a period of time, identify how many times you're trying that strategy and implementing those interventions to really see whether or not something is working. So it is meant to be as a cycle.
Well, I'll just add that there's a larger hope here, too. Like, so if you think back to the ways that data's been used in education, right, I think back to like accountability and No Child Left Behind and it changing to like a gotcha and a thing that became punitive, and teachers around the country started talking about children as numbers and levels, right? Like, and having to move them, and we lost sight of the child as a human to an extent. And then also, we, everything became punitive, so then it was very demoralizing for some folks involved, right? I was a special education teacher at a time where it was very much like, why would I be encouraged to teach high-risk, high-need populations if I was going to be punished for like lack of what was perceived as achievement, right? So when we're having these more lengthy conversations, shifting it to an asset-based language and doing it in a way that highlights its asset, so you're speaking about what do the children already succeed at and can excel in, but it's also asset-based for the teachers. Like, what are you already doing well that you can enhance? Like, where is what you're doing working and growing that process? And I think that will have much longer-term benefits than the data talks of old, where it's just like, how are you going to do better? Like, when you're 69, get it to 75 and not paying attention to what's causing that, right?
This is the appreciative inquiry in action, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
Can I ask a little bit, like, what are the, we talked a lot about the PLCs, it's a great model, and you're saying they meet weekly? Like, just how often are they meeting and what does that look like? That's hard on a union contract. Like, what does that look like and how do we...
I'll jump in on that one, so sure. I will knock this one down. I don't have the Italian thing. So it's different for different levels, and that's kind of where David was saying. At an elementary level right now, those teams are meeting roughly on a weekly basis. And then at the middle school, they're going a couple times a week, and at the high school right now with the community lunch, that, a key shift of that allowed for daily touchstones.
Wow.
And so that's a piece, and clarity, it is a struggle at the elementary level, not just here, at every space. And so we're really tactically trying to look out, how do we go ahead and empower our grade-level leaders so some of the work that they're doing can do this? So really leaving this time as much as we can, some of the elements that are on that kind of flow chart, like identifying priority standards, those pieces are going to be challenging for us, particularly the elemental, just because of the time constraints. Middle school and high school have a little bit more peace, so we've got some thoughts and wonderings, and we can step forward in the coming months and coming years, how we might be able to assist that at the elementary level. It's tough. It's not just here, it's every space, you just, you know, you've got five-year-old kids and stuff like that, so you can't pull students together for, you know, a group study hall or having them be, having community lunch and stuff, it just doesn't exist. And so, but again, what I've seen and what we've started to see here is that there is, just like this evening, we were roughly 35 minutes into this work, I hope you felt the energy and the pieces that we're moving forward, that you could see where teachers are in the same spot. And then again, this is data they'd be looking at with kids that are in front of them. And so they're saying, what can I do to help support my kids?
It's a great model. Should we have time for it?
Yeah, and that's, we're in a struggle, and, you know, we may come back and say, here, do we have some flexibility? Just like last year, we came forth and Stephen and the team worked through that whole new schedule. A key part of that was as we worked through with our partnership with our teaching staff was using that half-hour day to do these kind of works. And again, with the school, the high school, they'd been seeing that part of that work, so how do we help the other schools?
And just to kind of close this out, so ultimately, for some of us, we really like data, but there is this history in education where sometimes it can feel like, oh, we're going to look at data. So our hope with this is that as we eventually roll this out with our teachers as a unified learning experience and then roll this out with new staff, by taking this more appreciative lens, people will be looking at data as a positive and something that can really impact their instruction and support learning for all students.
So if it's all right before... So if it's all right before we broke, just maybe Board of Ween just swing it on the table. If you were asked about your board meeting tonight, and somebody, oh, clever inquiry, and they asked you, what's the one thing that you might be able to share out with a community member about, kind of a highlight about your experience tonight? If you wouldn't mind.
Awesome. I'm excited that we're digging deep into data. I think that's been a common thread through community conversations throughout the year is, you know, oh, the kids are doing great, but how do we prove it? And you're proving it in a, in a science-based way and using tools that we use in the real world, too. I use Fishbones every day. I use some of these SMART Goals, you know, so I, kudos. This was a fantastic presentation, and I would encourage everybody to go look at this to see the great work you're doing.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any things you'd tell your neighbors?
I agree, Lorraine, that we're looking at data and we're using it to better our kids' education.
And then just as we close, I'm sorry, are you gonna say?
I was just gonna say that we're creating processes to inspire our teachers and staff and bring out the best in them and looking at data in a way that's focused on positives, strengths, to continue to move our results forward.
I mean, I think I like the fact that it was said before, what are our kids already doing? Let's look at it from the lens of how can we help promote what they're already doing well? Because I think that when students find themselves at a deficit, they always think about, like, what did I do wrong, right? And they're afraid, you know, my daughter got the worst test score she's ever gotten, and she came home and she said, well, that's it? My GPA is over. Right? And so I was like, well, no, that's not the way that works. And, and so I really like this idea that we're gonna use data to help inform our instruction for our kids as opposed to using data to say what our kids are doing wrong.
Or teachers, if that matters. Yeah.
And Arwin, if I just kind of pull on that a little bit, thinking about tying it back to the pillars, where that idea of this process, really thinking about the idea of shifting from blame to this idea of curiosity. There's so many great things, how could I help move that forward? So just that's a shift of the well-being of our kids, this idea about shifting from here to there. And then the other idea about, just from a sense of belonging, and I think we saw it tonight, very diverse perspectives and thoughts, ideas are woven in, and then working with the team to get into a spot, say, okay, now where do we collectively think we should go next best? So that idea of belonging and having folks matter in those conversations, and then now the ability for us to say, okay, now where are we gonna go next in our work, so.
I think one of the tie-ins from the Increase Miller tour to tonight was that when we looked at Hattie's research, I think that's hard to explain to the public, but what I would share is that collective teacher advocacy is shown to be one of the biggest improvers of student performance. And so what we're doing as a district is working together, and data is one of the things we're working together on and helping to bond our teachers and look and work more collaboratively. And that that's not just good for our teachers, it's what is best for our students.
Thank you, Caroline.
Great time.
And then just before this team leaves, so I did not introduce this team, but last year, our four folks here, we had started the District Data Team. T squared T, we'll call them. We started that group last year, and the charge there really was to provide tools to our professional learning community teams to do the work. And so this, as you can see, where they've gotten us to now, and then again, where we're ready to just, now getting closer to closer, we felt it was a pretty appropriate time. Again, we're right with our teachers, but now it's okay, here's a tool, teachers, so you can do that work. And as we continue to think about that, but I just wanted to thank my colleagues for being here tonight and starting this up last night, summer and everything. So thank you very much, everybody, I really appreciate it.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for having us. Hang on, Hudson.
I was gonna say something before you guys. Firstly, there was one part about this that I appreciated, and that was a good step of this. I think it's really important to like see what we think it should be, or actually what we can, that our needs obviously are gonna shift. I did have a question. Do you guys see that this could be implemented, like, in teaching students this process? Something that they could bring forward into the real world and starting how to look at data before they...
Great question. And tomorrow, I have a post-observation conference with one of my math teachers, and I'm gonna be showing him this because he was just doing a lesson on linear graphs with his students that I observed. And excellent point, because pieces of this can 100% be implemented in an activity for students in the classroom. So thank you.
Hudson, I love your question. And I was so grateful you asked that because I'm dying to know, like, as a student, like, this is all about trying to help students. Do you, you're feeling good that teachers are gonna be looking at student data like this?
Yeah, I mean, I think it makes it like feel like a little more like, okay, it's not like just like, and now like every day you're doing this, like, oh, it will shift. If like people are falling behind or if everyone's doing great, like, teach something else about this. And I do, like, that's a really great thing about this.
Thanks for sharing your opinions.
Thanks, Allison.
Yeah.
Thanks again, everybody.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, Hudson, and I will say, you know, you now have me thinking of your question of, you know, how do we compare state to state? It's, you know, that is a, it was a great question, and now it has me thinking like, how do we get that national data? Because that's gonna affect our college admissions and stuff. So I really appreciate all your contributions, and you're always spot on.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you very much, have a good evening.
And not every state has the regions, right? It's exclusive to quality of New York.
It's one of the hard things when you look at K-12 data, is that there's not really a good, I mean, BSATs, you know, there's really not a lot of national data.
I had no idea what regions were until my kids started high school.
There is, but every state has its own test.
Has its own test.
Another plug for something like an NWA map.
I was just gonna say, I feel like all the new assessments you have, just, you know, by next year, they'll have such good data.
And that's what's nice, those are nationally normed.
Yep.
Across the multiple millions of children across the state have taken those and have historically taken those, so it does help. Well, thanks again, I really appreciate the flexibility board for letting us to Julie more of a workshop as it presents itself, so thank you.
I would have liked to have seen that.
You can't give up, because I can't, nobody can, what you got?
I would have liked to have seen that more granular, not maybe like for our kids or for something, because I think what Barbara was having a hard time conceptualizing is how do we run this through on a small level? And that's because they chose such a big thing, right? Like the state test, like, so I would have liked that to have been maybe like our math scores on a math test, to show how it can actually, because you're right, we use SMART and corporate, right? So how can we actually do this on a smaller level? I think that that would have been nice to see.
I think you set us up for next year's presentation.
Yep, yet to come.
That was helpful, too.
That would be fun.
I thought it was helpful to focus on the process and not the data.
Yeah.
And even though I had a, I went through the presentation once beforehand and then went through it again, I was like, oh, I see, this is about the process. We're not looking, I'm not looking at this data.
No, I was just saying, if you look at it from a granular level, though, you can understand the process a little more.
Totally, you could have had an example that was a little more granular.
And I think that's what Barbara was trying to say, like, how do we do this on a long-term? If you looked at it at a smaller level, you could see how you could do it for just a task.
Yeah, for next week's unit.
Yeah.
But I can see that with a group of math teachers getting, if they all give the same test and 90% of the kids miss number two, then they're figuring out, like, how are they missing this concept on number two?
Right, small level.
So I can see small level.
Right.
Actually, like, grabbing around.
And we're growing that muscle, right? Like, as I said, like, we still have to take this through with all the staff and...
And so point out to them that maybe they should do it granular.
I actually told them they couldn't. No, 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 it's on me, it's like, process, process, process right now? Tool, get it ready, and then anything we should be able to cycle that data set through. And again, in the future, we would be coming back and looking at some of our own information. Again, with our, with kind of our roles at the kind of board level are not looking about this idea about how do you get kids to grow in things, just how do we check in to see how they're doing? So again, we'd walk through part of those pieces. We wouldn't get into the Fishbone piece, as we did tonight, that's a piece, but we will come, be coming in the future times to look at some of our own localized set as we move forward. So yes, it's a very nice kind of forecasting, so thank you. So we'll be coming.
And also, John, further to what you were saying, it, you know, three of the four class, classes, you know, on question two, everybody got it right, but that fourth class, there was, so there's a good place to share with the other teachers, like, how were you doing it differently and how can you improve it? So not only, it's just a good way to share different learning methods and teaching methods.
I know that Julia and I, we kind of did a brown bag lunch a little bit earlier this year, and you may or may not recall, this, though, is tied into larger systems. So the idea of what's called the Strategic Implementation Guide was developed and continues to be adjusted by what's identified as our District Guiding Coalition. They're putting instructions for professional learning communities. That's the principals from each building, may have an assistant principal in there, we have some teacher leaders in there. Basically, this tool is going through that team, and once they kind of say, okay, we're set, then it's a responsibility out in the field for that to be run and coordinated by the principals, make sure that's happening, and APs, training comes from here. So it's, it's all clearly connected, but it doesn't just get released and say, okay. So it's, it has to go through proof of concept all the way through deliverables. This has gone through many iterations, and now we're at a spot tonight where it's like, okay, we think we're ready to now start releasing that, and then we'll make adjustments along the way, but that really is how that process goes. And just as much as Julia's working with some of our other team who are looking at, how do you identify a priority standard? What is a priority standard? So we have that common language across the organization. Once that's ready to go, the District Guiding Coalition will kind of give their head nod on that, and then that'll go out. And then the feedback comes back to that coalition on a monthly basis. Schools each have their own school guiding coalitions, so that dance back and forth comes that way. And so again, it's more about the structures and the system, so the process. And then the work product we'll be looking for in the future is, hey, now let's go see some SMART Goals. Building principals are gonna be looking at that information. Let's see that some of the learning results are happening in those classes. Let's see how the kids did on that assessment two weeks later and stuff. So, so that's the general idea.
I'm just, I'm glad you're staying there for a second, because none of this existed before, like, I mean, it existed in other formats. They casually mentioned we adapted Nancy Love's Collaborative Inquiry method, which has the bones of it, but they built these tools. And, you know, we had a dead fish for our Fishbone.
It's okay.
I remember when Mallory and I were sitting, when we were like, we need to make it not dead. Aspiring, it's gonna be aspirations. And so like, every shift, every graphic, the positioning of things, like, was an iteration of something that has been growing as we're learning about it and simultaneously learning about all the other elements of this, which is, so each bullet is its own enormous amount of learning. So it's a, it's a real testament to just this, the dedication of these guys, the data team, and, and trying to make...
That's a good bit, see.
There you go, exactly. Bring it back full circle. But true, yeah, it is a work in progress.
There's one thing I just don't want to miss, and I know we probably have to move on, but this is gonna be great for outcomes, but I don't want to miss the impact that this is gonna have on culture and climate in terms of who we are as a district and how we operate and how we work together, the sort of positive strengths-based perspective, collaborative approach sort of built into the way that we operate. So I think outcomes, fantastic, but really wanted to underscore a little bit, and that comes from the leadership team in terms of how you guys, there are probably 20, if not more, different ways that you could have proposed to have some sort of system in place to improve outcomes. You chose this, and it's a very culture and climate-setting move, and I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we can do it again, another workshop? It's gonna be done, great.
This was fun.
I enjoyed it.
This was a lot of fun.
You gotta share the markers next time. I'll get sharing. Thank you, board.
Thank you. Moving on to 7.02, somebody want to make a motion on the resolution regarding financing of the energy? Carolyn, seconded by John. I am informed that because of the nature of this, that we need to take a roll call vote before we do that. Is there any discussion that anybody has about this contract? I think we've talked about it quite a bit, and she's not here, but I would just be remiss to not say a huge thank you to Lisa, to her persistence in bringing this community and exceeding the numbers she thought she was gonna get. So this is amazing. So I will start, does it matter? All right, Carolyn? Aye? John?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 6-0. Thank you very much.
I really wanted to say in favor, though.
As there is no one here for public comment, I'm going to close our 8.01 public forum for the night. Next, can somebody want to make a motion to move the consent agenda? Motion by Bill, second by Arwin. Does anybody have any discussion points on the consent agenda? Nothing to pull out? All those in favor? 14, recognition of donations and gifts. We have a great donation tonight from Acme Markets Foundation's Nourishing Neighbors Program. They are donating 126 $25 gift cards for the amount of $3,150 that will be used to benefit families in our community. Does somebody want to make a motion to accept this gift? A motion by Barbara, second by Arwin, all those in favor? Aye, 6-0.
Thank you, Acme.
Thank you, Acme.
Go Acme, yeah.
And that brings us to board dialogue and discussion. Anybody?
I don't have something huge to say, but as a testament to our student population and our administrators, I know of a family whose daughter recently found out about those trees in the mall where you could pick gifts for a family. And she had this wonderful idea to actually do one for senior citizens at a low-income nursing home. This is one of our students, she wanted to do this all by herself. She reached out to Dr. Siciliano, and he said, the school would be very on board for doing this with you. Put her in touch with Kim, and, and they're working on it together. And it's just, these are the students that are in our schools, and this is the administration that we have, and it was just such a heartfelt story that I heard.
I have goosebumps.
I swear. Like, I'm actually tearing as I'm telling you this story.
That's amazing.
Yep.
Top that.
Maybe I can top it. It is the season, right? We're coming up on Thanksgiving, and I just want our administration, Kim, our faculty, our staff, monitors, bus drivers, just to know how grateful we are for the work that you put in every day, because we wouldn't be needing to be sitting here if it weren't for you taking care of our children. So just thank you from the bottom of our hearts, everything that we've seen this week, everything that we've seen this year. It's, we are going places. Dr. Seuss, we are going places.
Places we will go.
The places we will go, thank you. And I'm just grateful to be part of this community and everything that the community does to support everything in the district. With that, if nobody else has anything to add, we will look at future meetings. Tomorrow morning, November, oh, no, well, tomorrow at noon? Sorry, I'm used to it being in the morning.